Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm calling this meeting to order and we are reconvening so there will be no roll call as we were meeting in closed session previous to this. Would everyone please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the time for public comments and agenda requests. Is there anyone here this evening that wishes to make a comment or an agenda request at this time? Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the business items. And the first item of business is discussion on the 2003-2004 budget modifications since the annual meeting. And Dr. Sunstrom is going to do a little presentation for us to pull us up to speed.
Does it work for everybody? Does it work for you?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. What I did was, I'm not going to go through every page that I sent you, but I put the final aid page, the final revenue page, and then I wrote in some of the key numbers that were from, the purple numbers are from the annual meeting. Okay? So we'll talk about the differences.
Page forty.
But I've got them right out there, so you won't have to go look for them. Okay? The black numbers I wrote because these seem to be hard to read. So, this is the aid. So I'm just, I'm going to review how much aid we're getting, but I'm not going to go through the whole process of how it works, but I'll certainly answer any questions if you haven't, because you've had, you've had time to go get it. So our aid membership, again, remember that this is the average of the third Friday count from last year and the second, third Friday in September and the second Friday in January was 3,299. The total shared cost that we had for last year, 27,000, 1,855,966. Remember, aid is always based on factors from the prior year. Our aid, I mean, I'm sorry, our value last year was 939,246,778. So using those key factors, how much aid are we going to receive? The aid changed from the annual meeting. The state changed the number of the factors as you determine how much aid. And you can see the difference. The secondary cost ceiling changed from $7,558 to $7,531. The secondary guarantee went down a little bit. I have no idea why that changed. 974,000 to 966,000. And the tertiary guarantee went up just a few dollars. I do have for you the little sheet that we used at the annual meeting to show how we get the aid. And that is at your table in Salmon. If you remember that on the, so we have a total, go back to this one for a second. A total of shared cost per pupil of $8,444. And our equalized value behind each of those pupils is $284,707. So putting that back to this sheet. So on the first thousand dollars of that 8,444, okay? We look at, the state is guaranteeing $1,930,000 behind every pupil. We have 284,000 behind each pupil. And so when you do the proportion of that, on each of that first thousand dollars, for each dollar, we have to raise 6.15 locally and 85 cents comes from the state. Okay? And please, Tom, if you've got any questions. Okay, for the next $6,558, okay, for the next amount, we have to... That is not the right number. This is not the right number. I have, am I looking at the wrong one? I'm in the dark here. Secondary, yeah, it is. No, this is, yeah, this should be 6531, not 6558. Because we didn't subtract 1,000 from the 7,531 and get the right number. Okay? Because this is the secondary ceiling. Okay, so, on that next, on the secondary aid, okay, so we're now looking at $6,531 for each pupil. And of that, now the state is guaranteeing $974,422. Our property value, back to the dotted line, is 284,707. So, of each dollar that we spend at that secondary level, we have to raise 29 cents locally on that dollar and the state will give us 71 cents on each dollar. Okay? Now, going up to the third level. So now we have 8,444 is how much, if you remember, that I said for each pupil. And if we subtract 7,531, this number, we have $913 at the tertiary level. Okay? So at the tertiary level, the guarantee on property changes and it is 378,459. And locally, we have 284,000. So at each dollar spent at this third level, locally, we have to raise 75 cents on a dollar and the state will give us 25 cents on a dollar. So there's our three levels. Any questions right here now? Going back then to the first page, at the primary level, when we do those percentages and state, we raised 15 cents locally and 85 at state level, we get a total of $2,812,000. And that was the same as the annual meeting, because remember that's whole harmless, so it was still $1,000, everything stayed the same. So that's the same number. At the secondary level, we are going to get over $15 million, $15,250,000. That is down a little bit from the annual meeting, because then it was $15,264,000. But at the tertiary level, we are now going to get $745,000 and it was $876,000 before. So we are going to have a total aid payment of $18,696,000. At the annual meeting, we were saying 18,800,000. But you see some of the factors changed, and I told you that would happen when we'd get down to the end. So we are going to get 67 cents on a dollar from the state. And at the annual meeting, I was saying 6 to 6 cents. Okay? Because the factors have changed. Questions or, okay? Makes sense? Good. Okay, now looking at the revenue side. On the revenue side, this is page four, and the information I sent you. And I have highlighted the key ones that I'm going to mention. If you look at the left side right now, just getting our key formulas down, okay? Just a reminder, last year, we had a base revenue of 24,632,000. We had a declining enrollment exemption of $236,000. Also, last year, when we averaged the 2000, 2001, and 2002 memberships that we could use that factor into the revenue limit, we had a membership average of 3,333. At the annual meeting, we had projected that when you added the new, or averaged the new, 2001, 2002, and 2003 years together, that we would have an average of 3,277. It actually ended up as 3,298. Okay, so we went up. That's, that's very good for us. What happens though, if you go down to this section, is that our declining enrollment was not as much as expected, so the amount of money that we were going to, at the annual meeting, was going to be a little over 300,000, and now it's just about 200,000. So less decline, so you get less declining enrollment exemption. You'll say, well, geez, you know, I mean, the, you know, is it that big a deal if we have a decline? After three years, this really drops off. So you want to have the kids. Okay? Because it catches up with you. It's good for a few years to help cushion that, but after a while, it doesn't work that way. Okay, going over then, I'll go back to this line right down here for, well, I'll mention it. The state aid for computers at the annual meeting, we were looking at almost 47,000 and now by formula, it's up to 49. Okay, looking at the other side, we're starting out with our base revenue of 24,632,000. Our allowable increase per member ended up, remember, we didn't know exactly where it would be, we were projecting, but we were using 236 even, it ended up to be 236.98. Okay? So our revenue per member, the most that we can raise for this school year that we're in, is a little over $7,600. The revenue limit then, before exemptions, is 25,154,000. At the annual meeting, you can see that we were looking at just a little under 25 million. Transfer service, if you remember the discussion we had at the annual meeting, that's the special ed or English as, ELL, English language learners that we receive in the district or that can transfer out. There may be some money that either comes or follows. At that point in time, when we had the annual meeting, we were projecting a little under $6,000 and that has moved up now to over $33,000. So we have a new, as we worked on the formula, now we're again over the 25,188. So now we have to look at our non-reoccurring exemptions and that becomes that declining enrollment exemption. So now we're only adding back the 198, 198,000 rather than the 320,000. So keep working down. We get down to, again, some of these side things that have or have not changed. We go to our non-referendum debt. At the annual meeting, we were saying was around 22,000, a little over 22,000. At that point in time, I told you that the head start building was in there. DPI has changed some ways that they want us to account for that loan, so therefore that now has changed to $4,339. In here is a yellow line that I wrote. You can say, well, why? It's blank. Well, it's community service and I had sent you a note that we would talk more about that, because we just didn't have it ready to send you the other day. And so this is another amount that we're going to recommend to you tonight of a little over $20,000 to add into here. And as we work through, you can see where this, this comes through. Okay? So I won't expound on it yet, but we'll come back to that. And down here is our computer aid at $49,000. And so our levy is $9,665,000. Up a little bit compared to what it was projected at the annual meeting, after you sift and sort all the formulas out. Questions on the revenue side? Okay, a couple of the points that are directly related to revenue or aid that I want to bring to your attention as they intersect with what we're bringing you tonight, but also where are we going as we literally immediately start next year's budget? Believe it or not, I don't know if you realize, I wasn't here at the time, but last December, maybe November, maybe January, you were talking about, you know, how much money did you have to cut for this year's budget? Tonight is when you're ending that discussion, all these months later. Now we are finalizing the '03-'04 budget. So literally, and actually, some of the discussions have started already. What are we going to do for '04-'05? So that's, that's the context why I share a little bit of the information with you that I, that I did include in your packet. Just a few things I wanted to highlight on enrollment, because it is a major issue for us in Merrill. You have the updated third Friday enrollment on this page. You can see that Midway has very small class sizes and is down to 86 students. You can see that our kindergarten class this year was 194, the lowest out of the last four years. Okay? And I'm not even telling you all what I think this means right now, it's more, I just want you to start factoring this in to other things as we keep moving down the road. Couple other things to mention is that if you look at the fifth grade class right now, we have 241 students. So if you think of the elementary and we bring in about 200 next year again, we will have a reduction of above 40 kids, if you ever take, out of the elementaries. Again, just factor it in. As I used to, I used to say, and I think one of my board members down the dell is, "Put it in your back pocket for now." She kept saying, "How much do you think I could put in?" But, okay, so if you go to the middle school and we take this fifth grade and move it into the middle school, the eighth grade moving to the high school is 248. So you're looking at pretty much status quo enrollment at the middle school. Again, key factors we look at next year's budget. And if you look now at the high school, we have 284 students in, as seniors, to be moving out. And if we only bring in about 200, there's where you're going to see your big drop again at the high school. Okay? One more thing, put in your back pocket. The, down here, this has ended up to be the third Friday enrollment, 3,260 students. We, some internal challenges of making sure that we counted all the kids, so that has changed from the one I gave you. Not major, but just want to make sure that you know that this is what it ended up at, Couple brief things on the other two enrollment sheets that I gave you. Just looking at some of the buildings in general, if you look at the elementaries, you'll see that since 2000, Jefferson has gone from 184 to 163. Kate Goodrich has gone from about 408 to 439. And of those right now, the information, I have about 12 of those are out of attendance, from out of attendance area for various reasons. Okay? Something I was trying to get a handle on, because of how many it really was, and it's only about 12. Midway, I mentioned a little earlier, you can see that we're seeing a continuous drop lift. One of the things that I'll be getting soon, I want some projections on kindergarten enrollments in each of the elementaries, so we can, you know, maybe one will be much higher than it's been and one will be lower. I mean, we'll, you know, we'll get some of that information soon. Washington Elementary, 304, and has dropped down to 285. Again, not drawing any conclusions at this time, but just key information as, as we move ahead. And the last sheet regarding enrollment are some possible projections. This goes from 1987 on and what we did was put the difference, this is January counts, I'm not going to worry about those right now, but looking at the September counts, you can see since 1987, you know, what the changes that have been in those years. And then if we take, if you look at the little writing on the bottom, and this is a new sheet from your packet, okay? I averaged four enrollments wrong and I was using the wrong one. So I've always told you, if I find something I did wrong, I'm going to tell you. So this is a new averaging and this is, this is accurate. Okay? So please, please make note that the one that you had in your packet was, was not accurate, so insert this one. If you look down here, so right now, we'd be looking, this is using a...
I think this is the one we have in our packet.
I noticed, I think we have the right one. See, I just can't get beyond that one.
Well, one in the brown packet is different.
Brown one? Yes, use the brown ones. Use the brown ones. I just can't get beyond that sheet today. Okay, if you look down on the bottom, our enrollment was the 3,260 students, but it didn't include the head start in, on third Friday, 67 head start student and open enrollment of 24. Okay? Also, what we did with these projections that you see that I highlighted, this is using the actual senior, you know, bumping each grade up into being a senior and using 200 coming in, not the 175 that I put in your packet. Okay? That's, that's the only difference, is that 175 to 200. So we would be projecting a reduction of 64 for this coming year, and then you can see 82, 82, 98, 45. I'm not seeing a leveling off yet. I was hoping, so, we're in this, we're in this for a while. Questions or comments?
I, I missed the head start and open enrollment. Was it 67 and 24?
Yeah, it's on your brown sheet. It's on the bottom written very small, so you have, you have the...
I can't see it.
Okay. Yeah, so when the lights are on, you can still... Okay, what do I see for the challenges for the 2004-2005 budget development? Decline in enrollment, and I guess that's a real obvious one. Maintenance of many of our programs, somehow, you know, finding ways to maintain the good things we're doing. Labor contracts with our unions, making sure that we're offering a fair package, but yet fair for everybody, both ways, you know? And also very fair to the property taxpayers and, you know, taking account, everybody's part in it. Health insurance increase, of course, become part of those labor contracts, but that's a huge unknown, not just in school districts, but everywhere. Our technology, you know, we lost a lot of teach grant money. We have some things that we, you know, we need to do to make sure that we're using technology to the best that we can for our kids and the staff. Building maintenance, you know, we have quality buildings. We have to make sure we're putting in a fair amount of money there so that, that they are being maintained. Staff development needs, with all the changes that we have and the expectations that we have of staff and bringing in new programs, we have to make sure that we, we're spending some dollars on that. And then last is a term that you will probably get tired of hearing from me, and I guarantee the staff will, is redistribution of some funds. Because if we are going to put, let's, as an example, if we want to put additional dollars into technology, if we've lost all the teach money, where does it come from? We don't have enough new money with the revenue cap to make upwards, so we're going to have to redistribute it from somewhere else. So redistribution will become a term that, like I say, people will get tired of me. Me saying. I know from experience. A lot of words I've used, if you want. Comments on any of those? Just keep moving. You agree with them? I mean, do you see others are logical? Okay. So trying to take what I showed you in the revenue cap increase and bringing it down to, let me show, remember this sheet you will see later? Remember this good old sheet? And the budget adoption format that you will have, and you have it at your table tonight in a real pretty room. This, I tried to put in English here. Okay? These are the changes from the annual meeting. Okay, at the, the actual revenue cap is 25,386,392. At the annual meeting, we projected 25,317,720. So we had an increase in the revenue caps at the annual meeting of $68,672. So how are, how are we proposing tonight and recommending to you that we use that additional dollars? In that, to help you understand where that came from again, there was additional money transfer service, the FTE increase, the number, the membership going up, and then the decline enrollment change. Okay? So there's where you get your 68,000. So what happened to revenue and expenses in the complexities of the budget? If you remember, at the annual meeting, we didn't have the grants in there, we didn't know some of the dollars and all that, and so we told you those would be in. So as we work down this, you'll see a lot about that and some of the other, just real routine changes based on not having better information. We know specifically how many kids and that type of thing. So on the revenue side, over $152,000 was added for those 21st century grants we received. Transfer service I've already mentioned, FTE increase I've mentioned, decline enrollment I've mentioned. We have more solid sage money, dollars that we know that we're going to get, so that has gone up $60,000. Open enrollment, we had, we brought down, okay, $20,000. Computer aid, I mentioned that, 2000. Some additional grants that we received, another $35,000. There was $10,000 added to the student house budget and a little over $1,000 to the school forest. Now, on the expense side, to offset that, we hired, when we knew where we were at with the number of kids and so forth, we hired, if you remember, Yule普's additional one and a half sage teachers, so that's on the expense side. A little over 3,000 was added to textbooks. HSED additional slots, I'm going to go into that more in a few minutes, but I'm recommending to you tonight that we purchase some more high school equivalency diploma slots from NTC. And that's expounded on in your booklet or your, your handout. Again, some staff dollars that were added for staff development, additional 21st century, that goes back to the grants. Okay? Part-time administrative services salary and benefits, if you're also in your packet, I'm recommending that we hire half-time administrative services, administrative position back to deal with our buildings, grounds issues and that. There's more rationale that we'll get into. Youth options, remember, we just did that at the last meeting, additional cost there, about $7,500. We added about $7,000 to technology and I put possible, probable, whichever term I don't use at this time. I think we need to look at possibly having some form of audit to get a baseline of where we're at and where we need to go. Grant, staff, again, related to the grants of over 25,000. Lower was the interest expense by a little over $29,000. Some money added to substitutes, a little over $6,000, and then the offset of the house back over to $10,000 on expense side. Lynn, do you have any questions?
Well, the interest expense, did, did we read right? Was that, I can't remember, did we?
The interest expense difference is the difference in the short-term borrowing interest that we have to pay on the loan that we took out this fall, or whatever it budgeted. did.
Remember, we took that out after, we actually did, we actually did the short-term borrowing after the end of the meeting, so now we have a hand on exactly what it is.
Okay.
Okay, cash for purposes, isn't it? Okay?
All right, thank you.
Other questions?
I, I thought we were bringing in more students in open enrollment than we were sending away. Why would...
This is just to what we, you have to look, this isn't the bottom line of ins and outs. This is what we said at the annual meeting versus what actually happened. Okay, so it's a little bit different question than what you're bringing up. Make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, that hopefully is English to what has happened with the budget. Okay, let me go, um... Let me go to community service. This district has not, and it's in yellow at your table, and we're not gonna go through everything that's there. Some of it, especially the last two pages, you can take home to just give you some more background data, um, for you to have time to look at. But if you look at, what is community service? It's Fund 80 in the accounting system, and I will read this. The fund is used to counter activities such as adult education, community recreation programs such as evening swimming cooperation and softball leagues, elderly food service programs, non-special education preschool, daycare services, and other programs which are not elementary and secondary educational programs, but have the primary function of serving the community. Expenditures for these activities, including cost allocations for salaries, benefits, travel, purchase services, et cetera, are to be included in this fund to the extent feasible. The district may adopt a separate tax levy for this fund. Building use fees charged for utilities and other operational costs must be recorded in the general fund if no cost allocation was made for these to the community service fund. You do it to Fund 10 if you don't have the separate levy for, uh, for the community service. Um, and then the one below, and I won't read it because it's basically a repeat of the other, but this is the statutory language. In 1/2013, print 19, the statutory authority that you have to levy a community service amount of dollars. So, uh, what it is, is things that happen in the buildings that you serve the community outside of the K-12, pre-K-12 educational program that cost the district money and we're taking it out of the general fund now, but could be supplemented by this, a little bit of additional levy, so that we're not taking it out of the general fund. Okay?
These would be things that we are currently doing, not an added thing. These are things that are happening right now.
Correct, yeah, not, not that we're proposing to start doing, okay? They're, they're going on right now. So, Pat is going to help with this also, and you, on the next page, what we're proposing tonight, this is my personality, so if it's yours, it'll fit. Um, I like to know what's the bottom line, what you're talking about. What we're proposing to you is to add an additional $20,372 to the levy. Uh, and I'll show you, and then I'll go backtrack and show you where it goes and what I've already sent you, okay? So on a $9 million plus levy, we're talking about adding $20,000, okay? And this is what that would be for. Uh, and this is what Pat has been able to compile. Um, the first thing would be the pool that we have. During the school year, um, there are, it's used 38 hours per week on average out of 45 hours that would be available, okay? And in the summer, uh, about 40 to 50 hours per week used on 65 hours available. And the amount that we're allocating to that, it would be at a cost of $14 per hour. When you multiply that out then, that would equal $29,526, but we have received some dollars for that, and that would be $12,465. So we're recommending for this purpose, uh, to, for Fund 80 of $17,061. Pat, do you wanna strike a little bit more where you got the $14 and where you picked that number?
Uh, the $14 I'm using, I have on the second, I guess it would be the third sheet in your yellow packet, a listing that I got from WASA as far as hourly operational costs. These do not include personnel. They just, they have actually gone through the work of figuring out how much the pool chemicals cost and the lights and the heat and to keep the water warm and that sort of thing, and it runs about $14 an hour. If you look at their schedule on the next page, they show hourly operational costs that you'll see further down there as well. And then they also show daily rates that they charge for nonprofit groups. I'm only using the operational costs so that we have some kind of a basis line there. I've included in this packet and you can go back further and see, um, some of the Everest base rates. Their base rates are actually less than the WASA rates for most of their items, but they do require that a community service person be available at all of their facilities when they're being used. So that's an additional $12 an hour that they add into everything that's there besides the base rate. So we figured we'd go on the low side, if anything. I think $14 an hour is probably a very fair kind of thing when you think of eating the pool and the chemicals and that sort of thing. And like Sally said, we do get some receipts for these public functions. It doesn't cover the cost and that would be what we would put into the Fund 80. It's just the difference.
Questions on the pool, otherwise I'll go on to the...
Tom, let me see.
Yeah, I guess I would just point out, having used the pool, there are always at least two lifeguards on duty, so...
And I'm not including lifeguard costs.
As I say, you said there were no, uh, no labor costs at all, so that's actually a very low figure for what the community is getting.
I did put a line on there that lifeguards cost the district $8 to $10 an hour, and so if there are two lifeguards there, that's $16 to $20 an hour just to have people there to make sure it's safe. And that's not a cost that we would pass on.
And I would have even preferred to have this in your packet when we mail it out to you on Friday. We literally got this done today, and that's why you're seeing it tonight, because you know, I don't, I told you that you might have it if we could pull it together. But we're going on the low side, making sure people understand what the concept is, why we're doing it, why we're recommending it, and then we'll refine it for a year out, okay?
You said that the, the labor costs are not in there. Are, are, where are those paid from then? Will those still come from Fund 10 or... So it, we still will be expending money for community service that won't be part of this fund?
Okay, going to the school forest, uh, this is only an amount of $990, uh, but it's the, there's no charge for community non-for-profit usage, and you can see Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, Brownies, and 4-H, and it is at $9 an hour, not a real high figure. Uh, and it adds up, as I said, to $990, and we have had no receipts in there, so it is the $990. And Pat will go into where she got the $9.
Uh, the $9 an hour, I, I took the numbers again from the WASA schedule. $17 an hour is what they charge for a kitchen use in their elementary buildings. At their school forest, they do not allow people to use the kitchen facility unless they're purchasing a meal package, which is a prescribed number of dollars per meal, and they actually hire a cook then. So our people have the kitchen facility available, I thought, one hour out of five for sandwiches, refrigerator, whatever, would be, would be reasonable. I use one classroom hour at $11 an hour for the building itself, and then a field charge of $6. WASA also has someone on the premises. They actually have a custodian that lives on the premises, so there's always somebody there to make sure everything is taken care of. We don't have that kind of situation. And again, I don't want to add, um, personnel costs into this. These are four little groups that are out there a very minute number of days. We do rent the school forest out to family groups and other groups, and we charge $50 a day, I believe it is, plus a security deposit. Uh, so $9 an hour is not a lot. They may be there more than five hours, but I thought five hours was a fair, and again, maybe the low side to calculate this. DC Everest also rents or uses their school forest, but they don't use it very much for student activities that are, are not school-based activities.
Questions on any of that? Okay, and the third one and last one that we have is the Learning Connection that uses our building. Um, and the hours per semester, on average, 105 and a half hours. So it'd equal out to 211 hours per year. This is not including any potential summer hours at this time, again, we're being very conservative. Uh, and the cost at $11 per hour, and that would be a total of $2,321. And Pat, if you wanna go into where you came up with the 11?
Okay, the $11 an hour again is, is off of the WASA sheet as far as what they consider an operational cost for a, a classroom. Classrooms, labs, that kind of thing, they run at $11 an hour. I'm not picking on Learning Connection, but it was one that I could get a handle on as far as a definite number of hours. What I'm planning to do is go through the records and see exactly how many other community groups are in our buildings, because we know there are some that are using the gyms and the auditoriums and that kind of thing, and we'll come back to what that next year. But this is, again, just, it's a start. It's something to kind of look at and say, there is something here that we should be doing and, and should be using.
Questions? Otherwise, I'll tell you how it, how it fits in the whole picture. Okay, going back to the revenue cap sheet, and you have this in your hand?
Yeah.
Right, and it should be page four, and they should be in order, hopefully. Okay, you go down to, I highlighted the interesting thing, I at least I think was interesting, Pat and I both thought it was interesting, which changes. Down here, I mean, everything remains the same as you calculate the revenue limit until you get down here on line 15B, Community Services, is where the $20,372 would be added in. We do not receive aid on this, okay? This is, you know, just separate, this is local. So that would increase the levy then to $9,734,807, which is the $20,372 added on to what I showed you before. But ironically, how the formula works in is that it changes the computer, extension for computers, uh, just, just a tad, but it does. And I can pull up the other number if you want, um, exactly what it was. Do you have a handy tab?
093. 49093.
49093, and now it's 49196. So anyway, if they factor that in, so, uh, so it would bring up the levy now, the additional So continuing through in your, that, I wanted you to see that so you know where it fits into the revenue limit formula. Whoops, wrong one. So, taking a look at now the factors, uh, this is the one that you had in your packet. This is page 11 in your packet, and you can see that our actual levy last year was $9,719,000, and at the annual meeting, we said $9,485,000. I've already brought that number up to you tonight. Now it's finalized at $9,665,000, which is still less than last year's levy, okay? So without Fund 80, we would have had about a half a percent decrease in the levy. And the levy rate would have gone from $10.40 down to $9.88. With, and just now you're going to your brown, with the $20,000 added in for Fund 80, we go to a levy of the $9,685,000, and so now the percent change is a little less than a half a percent, .35. And rather than $9.88, it is now $9.90, so it adds 2 cents, okay? I'm gonna go back to that, but the other thing that this does for you, you can see differences in share costs and aid and so forth, but unless you have a comment up. So here's the bottom line for the levy. This is what you received, and then I'll show you the change. So adding up Fund 10, $6,685,000, the charge backs, remember, those are uncollected taxes from the prior year. Those stay the same as we showed you before, Daniel May. Uh, Fund 30, uh, the Washington roof, uh, is included in there. And so we have a total levy of $9,714,435 minus the computer aid, so a levy of $9,665,342. Divide that by our property value. And if you remember, at the annual meeting, we used property value with a 0% increase because we have, you know, had various changes in property value over the last number of years, and going backwards a little bit on this sheet, you can see that, uh, in the last few years, it has been anywhere from, you know, 10, 11, then it dropped down to 7 in 2000, and then 2001, 8%, and then last year was only 2.4. So we didn't know where it would go this year. It ended up at 4.66%. Okay, so we had, given that, we had a larger number to divide our levy by, and so we ended up with a levy rate of $9.88, which again is compared to $10.40 from last year. Adding on now, the $20,000 that we have proposing to you, recommending to you for community service, here's that $20,000 added in. And so now you have a levy of $9,685,611 divided by our equalized value, and so we have a levy rate of $9.96. So we have a 2 cent difference. Going one more page to bring this home to show you how it affects... No. This is the one you received. Let's go here first. This is the one you received, and you see the $9,665,000 of levy and a dollar increase, uh, a percentage increase of a minus a little over half a percent. And so with the 52 cent decrease from $10.40 to $9.88, it would be a, a assessed value, if you had a $75,000 house, it would be a minus $39 in taxes. If you have an assessed value of 125, it would be a minus $65. And if you have an assessed value of about $200,000, it would be a minus $104. If you add on, if you add on the recommended community service, I'm trying to stay out of that whack and muller, you can see that the change in actual, what it does, if you have a $200,000 house, assessed value, is now gonna be a savings of $100. So it's gonna cost $4 for an individual or individuals who have an assessed value in their home of around $200,000. That bring it home to you what it really, you know, means in dollars to people if you, if you go along with this recommended change. So we have a decrease this year of 48, no, 50 cents. 50 cents. 50 cents, okay? So even though, you know, the declining enrollment and everything, you know, I really hope community members sort of, you know, understand that we, you know, our revenue is capped. We don't have the luxury to go out, even if we have an increase in property value, we do not have the luxury to go out and add dollars on and even, and we can't even stay at the $10.40. It benefits the property taxpayers, and that's fine. But I hope everyone understands that because that will help us as we work with the community.
I'm not sure this is, it's kind of off the topic, but it really occurs to me that as you're showing this in terms of the decrease in the levy. For people who are not aware, the superintendent and the board have been going out to town meetings, getting information and also presenting information. One of the things we've been talking about is this unfunded liability, this huge debt that we've been saddled with since 1982, that is not our doing but that we're stuck with. And I guess I'd be interested in what the other board members have heard, but I've heard two things from people. One is do something about this debt because it's huge and it's growing and it's taking up a tremendous amount of our resources. And the other thing I heard is we don't want to pay more taxes. We can't afford more taxes. And I guess it strikes me as I look at that, and then thinking also of the future, when we pay off a couple of the debts on our buildings, that perhaps we could start working on that unfunded liability. Maybe this gives us an opportunity to do what the community is asking, you know, do something about this horrendous debt before it becomes even worse. And yet hopefully keep taxes, you know, within the boundaries that they are now in, not trying to increase, but yet still taking care of this debt that we're going to have to pay one way or another. Because I sure heard people saying, do something about this debt. Maybe this is a chance.
The, I know one of the meetings I was at, someone said, well, can't you do it when you don't have to, you can keep the same levy rate? And can't you just levy for it then so we don't see it? And what I had to respond was, no, we can't. Because we can't do it that way. Other entities have that luxury. We don't as a school district, which so be it, that's where we are as a school district. But this year, we have to go to referendum. There's no way we can do it without going to referendum. And so this year with the drop, it actually would have easily fit in there. So hopefully we can look at that down the road because that definitely has been the message we've been receiving. Go ahead.
I guess I would ask that we could put that issue, this whole unfunded liability problem on future agenda so that we could talk about it and, you know, begin to perhaps use this opportunity, this window that we're going to have in the next few years to begin to work on that thing.
It's especially important while the interest rate is down, that's what makes it lucrative to look at paying it off. Thanks, Tom.
John?
Coming back to this, either I missed something or I'm not understanding it.
Sure.
Why are we leaving labor out? Is, my understanding is, is now that's $20,000 that, out of our general fund budget that we can use some other way because we're getting revenue.
Right.
Why wouldn't we, you know, the lifeguards along in the future? Why aren't we, or can't we do it that? I missed that.
No, you didn't miss it. We just didn't go there.
Why wouldn't we go there?
We could go there. I think I just, I didn't want it to get to be such a big number at the beginning.
But I'm looking, my other option is, is when we look at budget cuts, we cut the pool. You know, this is a way to keep the pool because it's a community sort of value, you know, that the community is paying for.
I mean, you have, this is your knife to set the levy. I mean, you have that option. We recommended, you know, what we recommended. I'm sure, well, we're working on some other things. If you want to look at it differently, Pat can run some numbers. And because you'll be setting the levy later on in the agenda when you actually adopt it. So that is, that's your option. Well, sit down where you want to.
Any other thoughts about that from?
I thought that certain, certain swim lessons were paid for by patrons and others were free.
Some of them are and some of them aren't. I think the majority of them, there's at least some charge. Some of our people pay by season passes and some of them by passes, you know, on a daily rate or an entry rate for each type of their, who pays exactly what and when. I have a whole set of rates.
But the lesson fees when you cover the lifeguards or instructors?
Okay, good. And you see, that's the one area that we do have some receipts from, factored in. Other thought, any other thoughts, discussion?
Or the idea of including it? I guess, I think this, the whole idea of using this community service fund 80 is new to us. And I think it's something that I'm glad that you've looked at and started to bring some ideas to us as to how we would do this. And maybe it makes sense to do it slowly at first in order to, to see how this plays out and what the actual numbers are. Obviously, there's a lot of things you weren't able to research given the time you have. So I don't know how anybody else feels. If there's any other thoughts on this before we move on.
Sally, would you put the mill rate up? Thank you, Pat. Would you put that mill rate thing back up?
This one? Is this one?
No.
The one with the chart?
No, the mill rate with the chosen history of the years.
This one? I make sure I have the right one. Yep.
I think if we take a serious look at how our mill rate has changed from last year to this year, a 50 cent drop is incredible. And it's because we are a public institution that is under this revenue cap. It's incredible. So I'm very comfortable accepting the budget with the mill rate as proposed. 50 cent drop from last year. Wow.
What we could do, while we were working through a couple of the other items, I mean, Pat could at least get you a number. I mean, she has it available. So at least you can, you know, we can factor it in before you actually take the motion, if you'd like that, while we're working through some of the other. Do you want her to do that or?
So my other question would be is that, that affects this year's budget, that number. When we're looking at budget cuts next year, this is a number that we can look at factoring in more of this because then, you know, we wouldn't have to say cut a position or cut a pool because we can get the revenue back in through this. But it doesn't make a big difference in terms of, we don't need necessarily, we've already made the cuts and don't need to.
Your call.
I guess I'm just getting.
Sorry, John.
I guess I'd suggest because this is a new way of doing business and I think something that people are going to have to get used to a little bit, I guess I would be in favor of accepting the recommendations from the administration as they are. And then certainly next year, remembering this is an issue that we could figure into our budget negotiations, knowing that there perhaps is at least some amount of money that could be obtained by increasing this community service proportion.
I think I'm hearing from John too that it's a tool he thinks we could use as we look at next year's budget.
We have so few. That's why I wanted, you know, this seemed to be, this seems to be a tool that we have some leeway, you know, and it doesn't, it isn't, it's a lot of an accounting practice, but I mean, we are providing that. We are paying the lifeguards. We are doing all that. Our options are either have to do it or if we can fund it some other way.
Anyone not comfortable then at this particular time with just proceeding with the $20,000? Don't see anyone. Thank you, Pat.
Yeah. This is the page that you received in your packet on fund balance. And from in your packets tonight, I have an updated one. Saying that if you look down and you see the three stars, I just wanted to carry this thought through. It's basically what you saw at the annual meeting, but now finalized, okay? Because we have more information. Included in that $2,838,843. We still have Act 11 reserve money that came, that's WRS money that's still there, in the side down the road, but we have to do that. So additional sage dollars are sitting in there, the carryover. Teach carryover funds, okay, that we will end up using this year, I'm sure. The, we've now settled the union contract, the support staff union contract, Masbah 40103. So that is all settled out now with back pay, you know, taken care of. Also, we had, and this is the way you comp for, there are some leases on some copiers that you have, you come for it in here because that's money that you already have to, you're going to expend it because it's already accounted for. And then there's also some additional grant revenues that we've received since the annual meeting. Okay? So that's the difference in what the number at the annual meeting to now. What I want you to be aware of, and, you know, there are a number of things here that I said are spoken for, you know, here's our fund balance. Our fund balance is just about $2,350,000, which then, as I showed you at the annual meeting, if you remember how that works into cash flow, bond rating and everything and how it helps us. Okay? That is, any questions on fund balance?
I like to always ground us in that, the way to think of fund balance is a checking account rather than a savings account. And I think that that's critical because we all know how great our checking account looks when money comes in. But when we have to spend it, it goes down. So it's very fluctuating kind of balance.
Fluctuating and absolutely important to have to run a quality business in a school district as a business. And if you don't have it, then you end up paying higher percentages on loans, et cetera. So it costs you money, big money. So this is a document that again was just ready today, wanted to share with you, just a few points. Just does not want to totally fit in there. You will look at, when we, you know, you set the levy rate, you set, the board, you know, approves the levy, now we disperse that for you to all municipalities that are in the school district. And so by their percentage of property value as part of the total in the district, they then pay their proportion, proportional amount to the school levy. And so just a couple of points, you can see, you can see the valuation changes for 3000 or 2003, 4. You can see anywhere from the Towne Harrison went up over 22% to, the Towne actually went down almost 7%. So there's a real variance in what happens. And I've shared this many times with, at the meetings, at the township meetings that we've been at, you know, you as a school board have no control over this. I mean, this is the way they assess land. This is not, you know, your part is setting the levy, which is very formula-driven. The, you'll see that the city of Merrill went up about a half, a little over half a percent. But as far as the levy percent that they will pay, it went down over 4% as you put it into the whole formula of proportionately how they, what they have to pay. So I thought you would find this interesting as you, and people ask you questions, well, my taxes went up even though your levy rate went down and, you know, so forth. This will help you explain it. Questions or anything on that? So later on in the agenda, we will have the motion and, and as I've shifted back and forth between community service and, so the recommended, before we go there, the final thing I'll say. This is the budget adoption format that in the motion would be recommended to you. Just taking all of what I've said to you tonight and bringing it back to the formal way that it has to be adopted. It is in that blue paper on your, and we have it all copied for you, I mean, in overhead so we can go through any numbers with you. Let me show you one change. Other than factoring in all of the numbers that I showed you, the changes, expense and revenue differences, now this would be, see community service fund 80? Fund 80? This has always been zeros. Okay? This is where that 20,000 now gets factored in. Okay? Any questions or anything? Pat will help you on anything that you have on any of those. Otherwise, I tried to put it in English.
Any questions for either Sally or Pat on any of the information presented on levy discussion for this evening? Any additional questions?
Pat, be my backup. I'm saying this right. So when it comes down to it, with the added $20,000, $20,372 of Fund 80, the motion later on for the levy will to be to prove a levy of $9,685,611. Okay? So that, that's after we finish up a few of the other things, that is where the bottom line is for you. Questions or anything?
Any other questions, your comments?
I apologize for the disjointedness, but with adding that, the Fund 80 in tonight, it, you know, otherwise it would have been spoiled with what I gave you. Hopefully we're starting a new pattern with that that will help us down the road.
I think we're all very pleased with the presentation that you've given us on, and thank you, thank you, Jan. With the presentation you've given us and the paperwork that was prepared and trying to put it in English so that we can understand the differences. I think this is the first time I've really seen a comparison of numbers between the annual meeting numbers and the numbers that we were actually voting on. So I appreciate you making that clear to us. It helps us make it clear to the community and I think doing this on MP3 also gives the community a chance to understand. I'm sure anyone that's interested in getting printouts of any of the information you talked about can do that by calling central office and requesting some.
Absolutely. Thank you for your comment.
If there's no other discussion on this, we'll move on to item E on the agenda. And that would be technology cultures.
As I shared in your packet, if you look at page 12, what would be the job description of technology cultures, they would be teachers, that would be assisting, the first responders to technology issues and also work a great deal in more technology integration of the technology standards that the state has. And we are, in the, the board always has, of course, the right to create positions and legally we must bargain with the union as far as the rate of pay. And so as I shared with you, that we are in the middle of negotiating with the MTA, Merrill Teachers Association, with a recommend siphon of $1,000. This would be added to the extracurricular schedule in the contract. Therefore, it would be set and we would not necessarily, we, I'm not saying this is something that we are going to do forever. I'm saying that for right now, it gives us some opportunity to assist a number of things that we need to do on technology in the district. The dollars. The dollars for this, by the way, would come from grant dollars that we were receiving this year anyway. And in the grant, when it was originally written, was looked at, we were looking at student coaches, this would be adult coaches. So it'd be training that once it's given, we have in the district, you know, that will be used. I'm not saying at this time that I, that I, I may come back to you for next year and say, well, we want to keep it going. I may come back to you and say, no, we're going to be, we'll get it a different way. So, but right now we are recommending you approve the technology coaches as listed.
Thank you. Before we start discussion, Colin Memeyer, who could not be with us this evening, sent his thoughts on a couple of the things on the agenda this evening, one of them being this technology coach position idea. And he states, I'm also in full support of a technology coaching position that you have suggested for the district. I feel this will give us a good start in supporting the staff with tech needs there. So he wanted me to pass that on. I like your first responders to technology. Any discussion on the creation of the technology coach position? Louise?
I was just wondering what's a total number or is that kind of a fluctuating number? I know some schools would need to have more than others. How, how would the number be established?
We are looking at, and we will do just that and we don't have it totally nailed down yet, but we are looking at, a small school would have one, but then Kate Goodrich would have, you know, several. So I just, just received, I believe it was like yesterday, the number of teachers that might be recommended for each one. And so we will, it, we will space it out. It'll probably cost us in the neighborhood of $20,000, $25,000 this year.
John?
What's the criteria for becoming a coach?
Having an interest in technology, having some background in it. You know, there are staff members literally in each building that have that. And they will receive training as part of being a coach. We have a number of days that we will schedule that they will receive direct training and what we expect them to be able to do.
Will it be the building administrators call or, you know, you've got five people applying for one spot or?
We are looking at doing it by people that we know have some skills and interest for what they've shown and asking individuals.
I just don't know if you have from contracts, you know, it sounds good. I don't even know how coaches are today selected, so.
Tom?
You mentioned that this is, could be a temporary kind of position. Does this somehow, let's read here, does this somehow become part of the contract if we do this or how would we stop this process if next year we decide we don't need coaches?
Yeah, that's a question and what, being part of the extra duty contract list, I have no problem with because it's still our option, your option, to fill the position or not. Just because it's in the contract doesn't, in the master agreement with the teachers, doesn't mean you have to fill those positions. You have a list of sports, doesn't mean you have to have the sport, you just, you know, like you still have dance, not dance, gymnastics in that, okay? You didn't fill that this year if I remember correctly. So it's still your choice as a board to fill it or not.
You could still have the teacher there, but yet not have that teacher employed as a coach.
I'm sorry, can you follow that?
The teacher could still be in the school, except you could just decide not to employ that teacher as a coach.
Correct, correct.
And the other questions or discussion?
I really like the idea of having someone assigned in each building so there is an immediate person that can be contacted.
Yes, how, walk me through this. If I'm teaching third grade and I get called to do technology, how will that, is it's not, it's not like that. I would troubleshoot on my prep time or I would troubleshoot on after school time like a coach would.
Right.
Okay.
So they're not pulling people out of the classroom then, is that the intent? Is anyone interested in making a motion to approve the technology coach position that is presented? John?
I saw me.
Do I have a second?
I would second it.
Any other discussion, John? Louis? Tom?
I'm wondering if it would be appropriate to put an upper limit on the number of coaches?
We, I mean, we, we only have so much grant money. So, I mean, we're going to be reasonable.
It will only be funded by the grant?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Any other discussion on the motion? None? We are voting on motion to create the technology coach positions as presented? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay. Anyone abstaining? That motion carries. Thank you, Sally. Moving on to additional HSED courses from NTC.
On page 13, as a recommendation, as I referenced in talking about the budget changes, to increase the number of HSED high school equivalency, diploma, I'll use the term slots at NTC, where we purchase time from NTC so that our students who need that service can go there to complete the HSED. As, if you remember, we are currently working with Department of Public Instruction to really try to have that service internally here next year within the district. And we've been, then no longer be purchasing the service from, from NTC. But we'd have to go through a process in order to obtain that, that right to be able to do that. And we have to get that permission from DPI. So I shared with you, or Mr. Durand did, in what he wrote on page 13, you know, we've talked before about concerns in our district about the dropout rate. You can see in 2001, too, we had 35 students drop out. We had 32 in 2002, three. You know, those numbers are way too high. And it also, you know, of course affects our graduation rate. We are above the state average. And so with that, what we're recommending to you is to add seven additional slots to purchase from NTC for a cost of $29,673. That would then raise the number that we would have available to us. We already have a waiting list for kids to get into these immediately. That would raise our number of slots to 12. So I, again, you know, I have not been here this long, but we're trying to, these immediate things that are coming up, at least try to, this year to make some adjustments and then, as I said, for next year, we're going to look at trying to do this internally. So I strongly recommend you approve this.
And obviously because we have a waiting list, it's clear that we have, we are well using the five slots we do have currently.
Yep. I mean, we had a discussion whether to make it to 15. I mean, you know, 12 is still even conservative to what we believe we could use.
And this amount of money was included in your projections?
Yes. It's already built into the budget that, that was just presented to you.
Any discussion, questions? Louise?
I certainly think we should add these slots. The question I have at this time is, are, are we studying, is somebody in the district studying what other schools in the state are doing? What caused us to fall behind? I think we used to be, we used to have a higher graduation rate than the state average. I'm not sure. I don't really know that for sure, but I had always thought it was, but I don't know that for sure. But what are we doing different or what, what are other people doing that we're not doing?
Well, we are looking at, at things. And Mr. Durand has spent a lot of time on it. If you look at some information we shared with you at the last board meeting, we had an alternative survey and there were, I believe it was eight, I'd have that in front of you, Beverly, was eight students who dropped out or interviewed. I had requested that to be done. And we got some direct data of what their feelings were. That's a start. Also, in what Mr. Duran wrote up on page 13, three years ago, we had contracted for 15 HSED slots and in budget cuts. And I, I can't say this for 100%, but it certainly appears this way that, I mean, in the budget cuts, we dropped that down to five, we've had waiting lists. And so therefore, it would, I mean, logically, our numbers have probably gone up was dropped out because we haven't been able to get them in. So, you know, until we get further information, I believe this is at least a good alternative right now because, as I said, we do have a waiting list. And Mr. Duran could not be here tonight, but I don't know if you have any further information that you can share, but unfortunately, with the next two days being, being off of school, some of the districts couldn't be here tonight, so.
Lynn?
I completely support this. I think there are so many kids who learn in different ways. This is one way to reach kids and keep them connected and, and have them be successful with the high school equivalency. However, I do feel real strongly about the data research being important because we're spending money on NOVANet. Where some kids learn better with past packets, some kids need the structure of place off of our own site down at the tech. It just, I guess I'd like to see what's working. And I think we could, you know, we'll know, we'll have a handle on it when we have some, some data over time. And then compare it to the dollars spent because I think that's where, that's where they're really, the rubber meets the road with the money.
One of the models that I saw many years ago, actually, I can't tell you how many, but Beaver Dam School District, which is roughly our size, they were one of the first districts, I think they were the first district, who passed a referendum to exceed the revenue limit and it was on an at-risk program, K-12. And when I, I especially remember their high school and they had a building that was, it would be like, if it was just right, it would be like it was a maintenance building. Okay, it was off, it was close to the high school, but you know, just offsite if I remember correctly. And, but anyway, they had like four or five or six different programs going in, going on in that building. And so I remember one, I hope my memory is serving right, that, you know, one of the, they had, had quite a few unwed mothers. So they had a program that, that group could fit into. And so ever since I saw that program and I saw the quality of it, that's my vision. I'm not saying we need an unwed mother program here. I don't know yet. But I see what I call a multifaceted program, exactly what you're saying, that we have the HSED, we have the NOVANet, we have, you know, different ways that we can take a look at this. And so that's, that's what I've been sharing with administrators and asking them to work on.
A couple of questions. Are these students considered members?
Yes.
They are. And are they getting this education in Merrill or do we send them down to tech?
My understanding, and I don't claim to be the expert, okay? We send them down, they get it here? Tell me that.
We have an HSED program here in the high school that was taught by Sister John Marie in the morning. I think that's the one that we're talking about boosting the slots for.
I don't claim to be an expert in what's going on. Mr. Durand, he's, he's the one that runs this.
Any other questions or discussion on this topic? There is none? Is anyone interested in making a motion to approve the additional seven slots for HSED courses from NTC? Cost of $29,673. Brenda?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second to that motion? Tom?
Sure.
Any other comments? Tom, anything? Anyone else have any other discussion? Seeing none, will we vote on the motion to approve the additional slots for the HSED courses? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay. Anyone abstaining? Then who, that motion carries and the slots will be created. Moving on to item G, which is a discussion on our Director of Administrative Services.
The third item that I have recommended to you tonight to include in this year's budget is to allow us to hire a half-time Director of Administrative Services. This would be the former Greg Kautz's position who retired on October 3rd. The assumption was that other administrators would pick up his role. There are three items that I listed in your packet that from my perspective, that this assumption is not feasible. One is administrators already have full-time jobs in this office and as you see and as you observe, they're spending more than, than eight hours easily here to get the job done. There are also, these, there are not duties that each administrator can eliminate to take on these duties. You know, it's another way to look at it. So much of what happens at the district office level and why so many people don't understand why, what happens at the district office level is things that we have to make sure that we're meeting that are mandated and we have to keep track of, we have to do, we have to monitor, we handle all kinds of issues that come from parents and staff members and whatever that are never public and they shouldn't be public, but there's a lot of time spent on this. So it's not like these duties can just be picked up by someone else that Mr. Kautz did. And the third one is, we don't have administrators in the administrative staff in this district that are trained in the areas of building and grounds, safety, maintenance, transportation. That's not what they've been trained in. That's not their area of expertise as administrators. So over the long term, as I've said to you on a number of occasions, I intend to take a broader look at the administrative organizational chart, the roles and duties, they are very much dispersed at this point. And, but for the short term, I really believe that we have some things that are probably not getting, or I know they're not getting done now because of that hole with that position gone. And we can't afford that with our buildings. We, we just can't do that. And so I'm asking you to reinstate a half-time administrative services position and we will be looking for an experienced certified administrator who does have training in the areas of building and grounds, safety, maintenance, and transportation and so on. So that money was included in on, on the budget already that I presented to you tonight.
Discussion? John?
Is this a, would this be temporary kind of contract to whoever thought of you?
For this school year.
So it's not, yeah, we're not?
No, we're looking at this school year because like I said, I want to look at this whole org chart as a whole. I don't know what, what it'll go to from there.
So we're looking at probably going to the end of our fifth school year, end of June?
Correct. Right now, we're looking at this, this school year, which ends, correct, June 30th.
Again, Colin had some comments on this in regards to the item Director of Administrative Services. I am supportive higher, in support of the hiring of this position. It seems that Greg's retirement has left a big gap at the administrative office with many of Greg's duties being allocated to those with little or no experience in the area of buildings and grounds. I am in full support of your need to fill this position. It, it certainly has been difficult because I've received several calls about transportation and bus issues and when you used to say, oh, it's so easy, call the Director of Administrative Services, that person isn't here. So it either falls to having them call the superintendent. I, I know when Lori can help them, she does, but there isn't, you know, it's just hard where it was easier to handle those kinds of issues with parents and students. Now it's a little more difficult because it's, the burden shifted to other people who probably don't have the knowledge that Mr. Kautz had in that regard as well. Lynn, you have your hand up?
Yes, I do. I noticed on page 10, we have under expenses, part-time administrative service salary benefits at a, at an amount of $24,763.
Correct.
Now granted, Mr. Kautz's salary was over longevity that he'd been here, but $24,000, is that, is that sufficient to cover a half-time person and benefits?
Keep in mind, we're already partway through the school year.
True.
Okay. And we're just talking about this time of the year until, you know, to, to June 30th. And it wouldn't happen overnight. So I mean, we're, we're talking from hopefully November at some point to, to June.
Still seems small. Because of our incredible benefit cost. Okay?
Any other discussion? Tom?
And is related to that, is there a problem of putting that amount in if in fact the motion is made, actually putting that amount in the motion?
I would prefer you did it because let's say it's another $500. I mean, again, in a $28 million budget, you know, that, that's mean, and again, in a twenty-eight million dollar budget, you know, that, if that's gives or takes what we can get done, it's not, shouldn't be a huge deal from my perspective, so I'd prefer you didn't. But that's how much we've included, but a budget is just what a budget is, any more than you create a budget for your home. You know, you're, you put in some extra utilities, it may be up, it may be down a little bit, but, you know, we're giving you the, the general amount that we believe it is.
I guess this is, it's a little less clear in the sense it's not like a teacher where you have a salary schedule and, and sort of a basic layout of, of what that cost will be based on their training experience.
Well, I can tell you where, where it's generated from, maybe that'll help some of the questions. It's generated from this, you know, again, we're looking for some of the experience, so it is based on Mr. Kautz's salary split, okay, in half, so I mean, that, so there's some context for where the dollars, and then that, and then taking into account that we're already into the year several months.
Okay, Tom? John?
From a precedent setting, and I don't know how this fits in, right now, we pay a hundred percent benefits for a fifty percent person. Would we have to follow that practice, or can we offer a fifty percent, or, you know, some prorated benefit package versus the hundred percent?
You can, you can negotiate something different.
I mean, ideally, we find somebody possibly, you know, retired type person, that benefits aren't an issue.
Yeah, they are part of the union, so you can, you have flex, you have flexibility.
Because then, I know it's come up before, most places have a new structure to get over.
Right.
Any other discussion on this, or question? Or none? Is there anyone that wishes to make a motion in this regard to approve the half-time position of Director of Administrative Services for the remainder of this year?
Louis, I would make that motion.
Do I have a second to that motion? John?
Second that.
Any other discussion, Louis?
No.
John? Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none? Anyone ready to vote? We're voting on motion to bring back a half-time Director of Administrative Services for the remainder of this year through June 30th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay. Anyone abstaining? Seeing none? That motion is approved. Thank you. We'll move on to item H, two thousand three, two thousand four budget adoption. We've already had presentations, so...
Recommendation is to approve a, adopt a budget and approve the levy of nine million, six hundred eighty-five thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars.
That covers both H and I? Are we approving the budget and?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so H and I together. Item H and I.
You can separate them if you want.
Okay. Tom?
I thought that the chart up there said six hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Do you have the brown?
Yes, remember, we added the twenty thousand dollars for community services.
Did you just say nine sixty-five or nine eighty-five? You guys heard.
I thought I said nine million, six hundred eighty-five thousand, six hundred and eleven.
Okay, I, I heard sixty-five, so.
Okay.
Okay, you're good. It's on the brown sheet, mark page fourteen on the bottom, that has the amount of the one.
Page one.
Okay, so we'll do the motion first to approve the...
Adopting this, this budget.
The budget on the blue paper. So first motion would be to adopt the two thousand three, two thousand four budget as presented on the blue sheet that Dr. Seinstrom's gone over. John?
I believe that be about the budget as presented.
Do I have a second to that motion? Tom?
Second that motion.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? John? Tom? Anyone else have any other discussion on the budget as presented on the blue paper? Seeing none? We will vote to adopt the two thousand three, two thousand four budget. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay. Anyone abstaining? That motion carries. The next item then is to look at the tax levy, which would be on your brown sheet, and the levy would be the number as mentioned by Dr. Seinstrom, nine million, six hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars with a levy rate of nine dollars and ninety cents.
Just, just adopt the amount of the nine million, six hundred and eighty-five.
Not the levy rate. Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt the levy rate?
Levy.
Levy, excuse me. The levy. Carries.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? John?
Second that.
Any other discussion? No? John? Anyone else, any other discussion on the levy? Nice presentation. Okay. Seeing none then? We are moving to adopt the levy of nine million, six hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay. Anyone abstaining? That motion carries as well. Is there anything else under item aye that you want us to discuss? I think we can. Moving on to item J, the high school choir trip to New York City.
On pages seventeen to thirty, was information regarding the high school choir trip to New York that was requested. It was not ready for the board packet last week, so that's why it's added to this agenda. It's known as directly related to the budget because of the time-sensitive nature of them needing to know if you approve it or not. At your table tonight, on lavender, is a letter requesting the trip that goes along with the supporting documentation in the packet. This trip has been reviewed by the perspective that I'm comfortable with, that we've covered the basis to ensure that our liability has been taken care of, and, you know, that permission slips, and all of the fundamental things that I included in with your packet to make sure that those things have been covered. So that is something that we will use with all of the trips, and as I indicated to you, look to bring it to you as a policy down the road when I can spend some time on that. So with that, I'm not going to claim to be an expert in this trip, request that you have the information, and so do recommend your approval.
Did Mr. Bjorklund happen to mention how many students were interested? Do you?
Somewhere it said twenty-five.
Twenty-five, yeah. There will be a maximum of twenty-five students. Again, I'll read Colin's comments before we proceed. He did have some comments on the trip. He indicated how much he wanted to be at the meeting tonight and apologizes for not being able to make it. In high school, he had the opportunity to work under Maestro Bella, B-J-E-L-L-A, which is the person they're going to see in New York, at Lawrence University for a two-day clinic. It was truly a life experience that I will never forget. I wholeheartedly support the Vocal Jays and the opportunity to be part of the field trip to New York, and wish that I could also attend. This is a great opportunity for our students, and I would be willing to help in any way I can with the fundraising efforts. So, any other discussion, or any discussion on the high school trip?
Mr. Bjorklund could not be here tonight, otherwise he'd have been here to answer your questions to him.
Here.
Just like other trips, this is covered fully by the student or fundraising and stuff. This is not out of our budget.
No district doctors.
I am strongly in favor of them taking this trip. The only thing I feel bad about it in here is that Mr. Bjorklund seems to be insisting on paying his own expenses. That, that's certainly a very generous thing for him, him to do, but when I was in high school, times have really changed since then, our whole class went to New York on a train, and we were chaperoned by three mothers, no teachers. But the experience of, of going to New York City with, with the classmates and seeing all the things that were available, and it, it just changes the size of the world that you live in, and I, I really am in favor of our students doing things like this.
Any other discussion?
Um, this is just a personal philosophy, and I just feel real strongly about it. I think there's plenty of time, plenty of opportunities for fundraising, because I want everyone to go, not just those who can afford it. I think it's very critical that, that, that the kids who are part of a group called the Vocal Jays have hundred percent opportunity to participate.
Maybe this dates us a little bit, but when I was in school...
Yeah.
We had, I was part of the very first class out of Mellon High School who went on a senior class trip, and we all went, and it was a blast, and we did go to New York City, we went to Niagara Falls, and, and what we did, instead of a prom, we spent, we later earned our money over the four years to do that. But I have also experienced where we tried to do that in other places, and there just isn't the interest anymore. Good, bad, or different, it doesn't seem to work like it did. Ties have changed some. The other thing that I, I want to comment on this is that, and this is in no way, shape or form to be a criticism of, of anything that's being requested here, I want to help the high school staff get in a pattern that you know, know about this, like last August, and the board approves it before it's put out to the parents and the kids and, and all of that, so I want to help and take a look at the timelines and how we do this, so that you have, it comes to you first.
Any other discussion, or does someone wish to make a motion to approve the high school choir trip to New York City? Brenda?
I'd like to approve the choir trip to New York City.
Do I have a second? Louis?
I would like to second it.
Any other discussion, Brenda?
Just that I've known Jim since he came to town, and he's an excellent musician and runs a quality program, and I can't say enough good things about him.
Anything else?
Probably a board representative should also go.
You might have to speak with Colin.
Well, let them know if they want chaperones, we have a couple.
Is that your explanation? I just wanted to, to mention or ask the question, I think it's true, we're not assuming any financial responsibility, I'm assuming that we are not assuming any legal liability, that parents will fill out forms that are necessary, that the school district is not liable in any way for any...
Our insurance does cover them, so there always will be some liability if something major happens. I mean, it is our insurance that, that would be part of it, so, you know, that's what you're going to have on any trip that we have, field trips or...
Yeah, but we're not, we're not having to pay anything extra in terms of any additional cost to us.
No.
That might be.
And is there no other discussion? No motion then? Voting on the motion to approve the high school trip. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay. Anyone abstaining? That motion carries. Thank you. Under item K, there will be no action received, we have nothing under that, and a reminder that our next board meeting is November nineteenth, and I would look for motion to adjourn. John?
I'll second.
I'll second Carrie.
I'll second that, Colin usually do that, and they're not here.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay. Anyone abstaining? Thank you all very much. Thank you.